The following is a production of Cary TV, the Town of Cary's government access channel.
Call to order the January 24th meeting of the Cary Town Council. And at this time, I would like to recognize Councilmember France for the ceremonial opening.
Thank you, Mayor. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic with which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We're at item A3, the adoption of our agenda. At our council staff retreat a few days ago, the council decided to defer the roads, adequate public facilities ordinance, and the transportation development fee increase to our February 13th council meeting. This means we're going to remove these two items from tonight's agenda. They are shown as Agenda Items F2 and H2. We also learned this afternoon that the applicant has withdrawn Item 12 REZ01, the right property rezoning. This is, item on our agenda is E1A and B. And for those in the audience, since this case is withdrawn, there will not be a public hearing tonight. I'll reiterate that this case is withdrawn. That means the property owner must start the entire process over if at any time in the future they want to develop something not allowed by the current zoning. Having said that, is there a motion to adopt the amended agenda to exclude these items?
So moved. Second.
There's a motion and a second. Discussion?
Yes. I would, while I can't say I'm disappointed that 12-REZ01, the right property was pulled, I would hope that should the same applicant continue to pursue developing this property, they heed the concerns of the residents, their lists, and some of the things that were really important to them as they start, if they start to replan this property. I would really hate to see these folks have to go through months and months of meetings and process to ultimately come up with something very similar than what was being proposed, so...
Okay.
I'd like to just add to that briefly. I'd say not just the citizens' concerns, but the concerns of these council members because we are extremely concerned about making sure that projects are harmonious with the surrounding neighborhoods. And in this particular case, we felt like it was incongruent with what was there. So we're glad that it's pulled and we hope that whatever comes forward in the future is a better proposal.
Very good. Any more discussion? All in favor of the motion to adopt the agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries unanimously. We now move to consent, the consent agenda portion of tonight's meeting. We're at item B. For the benefit of the people watching our meeting on TV, we're going to take a moment to read our consent agenda items. And one vote approves all of these items. The regular consent agenda includes the approval of the minutes, setting public hearings on annexations, adopting annexation ordinance for 12A12 and 12A20, granting an easement to Progress Energy, and adopting the tax report. I'll now call on Councilmember France who will briefly summarize our planning and development consent items.
Thank you, Mayor. Item 3A, first on our agenda, was revised NC DOT municipal agreement for the Western Wake Freeway. B was an inter-local agreement amendment for the Colvin Park subdivision. C was the designation of historic landmark. And this will actually be on the council's February 27th meeting to consider adopting an ordinance designating the Cary First Presbyterian Church Cemetery as a historic landmark. 3D is amendment of a conservation easement. And 3E is to abandon the comprehensive annexation program. And I think all the committee members were really thrilled about that one.
All right. Very good. Would anyone like an item pulled from the consent agenda for discussion? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries unanimously. We're now at Agenda Item C, recognitions, reports, and presentations. And I would like to recognize special guests in the audience. We have Boy Scout troop from Genesis United Methodist Church working on their service badges. Would you please stand and be recognized? Thank you so much for being here. Now I'll turn it over to Mr. Shiver, who's going to present the manager's operational update, or maybe he'll call on Mr. Fogelman to do so.
Thank you, Mayor. I plan to do both. So, but before I make a few comments on four different items, I would like to call on Mr. Fogelman to give us our update on our financial management situation.
Good evening, council. As we typically do, we'll focus on operating margin for the general fund, which accounts for most of our general government operations and does not include our utility fund operations for water and sewer. We define operating margin as revenues, less expenses yielding what's left, our operating margin. And we'll do this in graphical format with the margin impact expressed in millions of dollars. The black bars will represent margin growth, or better-than-budgeted expected results, and the red bars representing margin decline. We began our adopted FY 2013 adopted budget with an operating margin of zero, meaning revenues equaling expenses. Our tax billings to date are about $190,000 better than expected in terms of revenue, and this is based on our $21 billion tax base, so slightly better than budget. Likewise, our tax collections are expected to come in a little bit higher. We actually have to budget a little bit lower. We can't exceed the previous amount from the previous fiscal year at that point in time. That was 98.5% and we actually yielded 99.4%. So if that materializes again this year, we'd expect another $410,000. Sales taxes, we've made it through four months of the fiscal year, so we're one-third of the way home for this fiscal year. And so far to date, we're about $210,000 better than our budget expectation to date, and this is on expected annual sales tax budget of $22.8 million. Our building permit fee revenue, this is our new item for this month. We are about, we expect our total revenues for the year to equal 2.8 million in terms of budget. As of yesterday, we have already received $2.5 million in building permit fee revenue. So we are about 56% of the way through the year. So at this point, we do expect to exceed that budgetary amount. We don't want to jinx ourselves certainly because we came in at the last minute last fiscal year, but certainly so far so good on our building permit fee trend revenue. Our privilege license fee revenue, we expect to be about $75,000 or 4.7% better than our budget for the year. And similarly, on our variable interest rate expense, expect it to be about $70,000 or 64% better than our budget. We continue to experience very favorable interest rate in the market, our average of .16% thus far this fiscal year, which yields us a current year-end operating margin of about $1.09 million on our operating budget of $121.8 million. That's just less than 1% operating margin, and that is about $140,000 better than our update last month. And with that, council, I'll turn it back over to Mr. Shiver to complete the manager's update.
Thank you, Mr. Fogelman. And I think the manager's, the operational update that Scott just gave shows us that at this point, the management of our budget and finances through this fiscal year is going well and is in good shape. I think it's important to remind everyone, though, that a lot of the figures that we get at this time of the year really reflect, may reflect as much as two to three months earlier in the year. It's a lot of those figures that we have don't come in until much later, usually, sometimes often a two to three and perhaps longer lag time before we see those. In addition to our financial report, I did want to mention four items. First, just to take advantage of the fact that we're meeting tonight and happen to have the threat of a winter event tomorrow, I thought I would just give council and our citizens an update on how we prepare for weather of this nature. And since the forecast still continues to call for sleet and ice, we will have our typical response currently in progress and will be really ratcheted up, I think, a good deal beginning around mid-morning tomorrow, and we'll be on the lookout. Public works crews have completed brining operations on all of the thoroughfares and primary streets within subdivisions. And I had a grateful email writer who said she was, feels a little more secure, she was happy to see the little white lines in the road. Evidence that the brining has been undertaken. And in addition to these efforts, we do have eight spreaders on standby. As I said, mid-morning, they'll be ready to go. We'll be spreading that additional material as the precipitation begins. And also a significant part, sometimes we don't focus on, but we also have chainsaw crews, or crews equipped with chainsaws, to be able to remove and clear fallen trees. And that frequently happens in this type of a storm, particularly if we have any significant accumulation of ice. So our priority, as always, and I think as we have told council, if a response is necessary, will be ensuring that the major thoroughfares are clear and remain safe for the traveling public. I would also like to reemphasize, reiterate, just talk a little bit more about our recent bond sale. Council talked about this a bit at the retreat. There have been media coverage of the bond sale as well. But I think this one was very significant in a couple of ways, and I'd like to just review those quickly. The sale was on January the 9th, and the town sold 85.7 million of new revenue bonds to fund needed wastewater and water capital projects, with the Western Wake project comprising over half of the funding needs. We locked in very favorable average rate, a very favorable average rate of 3.65% for 30 years. In addition, the town issued 12.7 million to refinance all of the outstanding 2004 revenue bonds. As a result of the refinancing, the town will save 2.16 million in utility fund interest expense over the next 17 years, which is worth approximately 1.76 million in today's dollars. Here's one of the interesting things, or one of the things that I found very interesting, was the significant level of demand in the bond market for Cary's bonds. And I think this is a great illustration of why it is so important to maintain AAA rates, ratings. Our three ratings on the revenue bonds that will pay for these services, water and sewer, and a refinancing, I think were key to the investor interest. Within the two-hour sale, sale period, investors placed orders for over $570 million worth of bonds. Since we were selling less than 100 million in bonds, the demand for these obviously was very high at that level. So our bankers were able to adjust the prices of the bonds, which lowered our average interest rate and therefore saved the public quite a bit of money for the, for the change in that interest rate. And the decrease due to the high demand compared to today's opening market interest rate estimates, we estimate saved the town over 1 million in debt service for the town over the 30-year life of the bonds. So that's significant, just the simple demand and the quality of our bonds, the fact that they are triple rate, AAA rated across the board from all the rating agencies makes a significant difference. Third item I'd like to mention is our, pertains to our long-range water resource plan. The Town of Cary's long-range water resource plan is available for review on the town's website. The plan provides a comprehensive guide providing cost-effective ways to meet Cary's future water needs through 2060. So that's essentially a 50-year period while being good stewards of the environment. So I wanted to remind everyone here this evening and also watching on television that citizen comments are invited through February the 1st and can be accessed, and information about the long-range water plan can be accessed on our website. And probably the simplest, quickest way to get there is to simply do a search with long-range water resource plan, and that should pull up all of that information. I would mention that we did hold an open house last week, so that opportunity has passed, but we will continue to take comments up until February the 1st. And I mention that because sometimes the long-range water plan, I think sometimes if our water's available, we turn on the faucet and it's there, then it's kind of out of sight and out of mind. But it's very important and a significant part of our service provision, and a costly one as well, as we plan for that over a period of time. So we would very much appreciate citizen involvement in that. Mayor, the last thing I would like to mention is a downtown roundabout project, which a number of us participated in this past Wednesday, yesterday. We held a groundbreaking ceremony for the project, which is an important part of our downtown project, but it is also very important for roadway geometry, safety, and traffic operations at two key intersections in downtown Cary, both on the east and west end of Chatham Streets, I think Old Durham Road and East Chatham, and then on the other end, West Chatham and Old Apex Road. And so at those two locations, which interestingly enough are sort of made for roundabouts, the way they split off there, we will have those roundabouts constructed. Project budget is 2 million, and construction is estimated to be completed this summer. And would also like to note that the town is receiving over $700,000 in grant funding for the project. Would also like to note that the bid, while the project budget is at 2.0 million, the bids for the actual construction came in considerably under what the engineering estimate was, so we got a very good, very good bid on this project. And as I said, this, it should start very soon and should be completed this summer. And with that, Mayor, unless there are any questions, that's all of my report.
Great report. Love all those black bars, Scott. Thank you. We now move to Public Speaks Out. Our next agenda item, Public Speaks Out and public hearings, which are Items D and E, have a set of instructions which are included on the printed agenda. So if you'd like to speak at either of these forums, please take a seat to my right in the rows that are shown as reserved, and follow the instructions on the agenda. Public Speaks Out speakers have up to three minutes for their comments, and speakers may speak on any topic as long as it's not a public hearing under Item E, and that's actually to your benefit because public hearings have five minutes rather than three. So I will enforce the three-minute time limit for Public Speaks Out speakers to be fair to all of our speakers. There is a timer located on the podium that is now highlighted, and it will be green for the first two and a half minutes. Then for the last 30 seconds, it will turn yellow, and at the end of three minutes, it will be a flashing red, and at that point, I will interrupt you and ask you to immediately conclude your comments. At this point, I would invite our first speaker for Public Speaks Out to approach the podium. Anyone to speak at Public Speaks Out?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the Town Council. My name's Adam Ashbaugh. I'm a partner with L-Star Management here in Raleigh. I know you have a lot on the agenda, so I'll be brief. We're here tonight for land development discussion items 1, A, B, and C, the rezoning of the Howell property. We've worked hard, I just wanted to let you know, we've worked hard with town staff to craft a proposal that's compatible with the surrounding developments in the area and the comprehensive plan to address not only land use issues, but also transportation and site plan issues. We've met with the surrounding property owners on three or four occasions, and we've made changes to our plan to accommodate as many of their concerns as possible. In conversations with the president of the Stonecrest Homeowners Association to the north, we understand that they've submitted a petition of support of this application with 30 or 40 signatures from their subdivision. In short, we believe our proposal is consistent with the comprehensive plan and is appropriate for this location. Again, I'll be here and available to answer any questions when this item comes up for discussion. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker for Public Speaks Out.
Good evening, council. My name is Martin Baum. I live at 6012 Farm Pond Road. The property of subject, the Howell property, is directly adjacent to my backyard. This evening, you'll hear from myself and several of the neighbors on Farm Pond Road about our concerns opposing the Howell property to be rezoned and developed into the 42 properties and lack of transitional use proposed by L-Star Management. As recent as this evening, in some brief conversations with Mr. Ashbaugh that you just heard from, every time we seem to have a conversation, we get a new story on the property. There are several issues that have not been addressed, even in discussions with some of yourself and the Planning and Zoning Committee as well. Couple of things basically that we'd like to discuss in the criteria for consideration in reviewing the rezoning. In proposal, or, I'm sorry, topic number three, in public safety, I'd like to tell you a story about Davis Drive and Farm Pond Road. About three years ago, about 5:30 in the evening, my son was sitting on Davis Drive, turning left on the Farm Pond Road, and was hit at 60 miles an hour and knocked about 100 feet down Davis Drive and almost killed my son and totaled the car. On number, I'm sorry, number four, in talking about rezoning and affecting the wildlife, this piece of property is still a little safe haven that's left on Davis Drive and anywhere in the area for wildlife. I can tell you, in my yard alone, every day, I see at least four herds of deer. We see fox, we see all kinds of different animals out there. And with that rezoning, with that property being developed, it'll be the last safe haven for the animals in that area. Number five, I want to tell you another story about property values. Four years ago, my property appraised at $3 million. I built my home. Two years ago, I had my property appraised for sale in a divorce situation that I was going through. It appraised at $2 million for listing. I had an offer with knowing that this property was going to be there two weeks ago on my property for $900,000, half of what I have it listed for based on the fact they knew this potential was looming over my property. Again, I just want to reiterate, as a concerned neighbor for not only public safety, but also conservation and animals, and forget about the personal money, this property is not a transitional use property from a 6,000-square-foot neighborhood next to us to anywhere from seven to 15 acres in that. And again, we would appreciate your consideration and taking care of the wildlife and the safety of our children on that street and our neighbors. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Counsel, my name is Raymond Davis. I live at 6032 Farm Pond Road, and I'm concerned with the same situation. I won't speak about traffic. You've heard about traffic. Proposed 40-some houses there, we add two cars to each house, we have trouble getting in and out now. Add 90 more there, maybe come out on our street. Town council, we're going to ask you to put up a traffic light or something because it'll be a madhouse. Secondly, I won't mention anything about the wildlife, Marty mentioned that, but if you want to see some nice deer fed, 7 o'clock in the morning, 4:35 in the afternoon, we do it every day. I do want to offer you a couple of areas of integrity you have heard, and we have heard over the last few months about transition of property spaces. We also heard tonight about harmonious with surrounding neighborhoods. The neighborhood just to our north, Stonecrest, has three streets, Round Top Street, Tellico Street, and Gravel Brook. And if you go to the Wake County real estate website, you pull up each of those lots, each of that land, you'll find that on Round Top Street, the average lot size there is 8,700 square feet. And on Gravel Brook, they're 10,300 square feet. And on Telico, it's 8,755 square feet. We've been told that the development of the Howell property will be consistent with Stonecrest, but yet we are told that it'll also be from 7,200 to 8,000 feet. So we got transitional downward, we have larger lots, smaller lots, then it comes to our acreage. Just be aware, the transition is a major issue. And Liscely, when presentation was made, there was a comment by the developer that there was a supposedly covenant that never existed. On May 16, 1988, Book 4260, page 0880, in the great state of Wake County, Bob Savage and Godfrey closed land for me and my wife. And in that warranty deed, it reads, "The above land is subject to the restriction covenants as set forth in Exhibit A and attached herein and made a part of this instrument." This is a copy that recorded on Book 4260, page 882, that says, "The residents shall build upon any area containing less than a minimum of 20,000 square feet." This is a plat of the TJ Howell subdivision. Lot 39's address is 5900 Farm Pond Road. This is what I bought. This is what I paid for. This is how we live. Someone wants to come in and change it. We're just opposed to the facts and the ethics of the truth. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. Next speaker, please.
Good evening, council. My name is Jim Sherrill, and I'm also a member of the Farm Pond community at 6005 Farm Pond Road. I'd like to bring into public record from the first meeting in September with council, and also the zoning meeting that we recently had, about Howell Road being a connector road with Farm Pond. And we tried to emphasize that this was not so, that Mr. Howell had taken care of that. So I finally dug up all the information that I have. So it was true back in 1987 that there was a, proposed for Howell Road to connect with Farm Pond Road. Then I have in my covenants here, a letter from Wake County, copy of letter from County of Wake dated March 25, 1994, to Mr. Thurman J. Howell concerning elimination of the future expansion and extension of Howell Road, copy of subdivision review committee dated April 27, 1994, connecting variance which would eliminate future extension of Howell Road. And then copy of variance approved by planning board on May 18, 1994, eliminating Howell Road from connecting to Farm Pond. Road from connecting to Farm Pond Road. So I would just like to make that a public record, go on record. Okay, since I have a little bit of time, I'd like to talk about, just also about Farm Pond Road and the traffic situation. Because of the seven wrecks that's been there, and fortunately, no one has died yet, but as I come home from work about 5:30, quarter to six, literally about a hundred yards before I get to Farm Pond Road, I start looking in my mirror and seeing how close traffic is to me. And as I'm coming down, if traffic's, I've got my blinker on as early as possible, and if somebody's there, I start slowing down because I can't count the times that I've been sitting there with my blinker on in a Tahoe, which is a big vehicle, and somebody comes down there and all of a sudden I hear screech marks, and I have to literally gun it to get out of the way of not getting hit in the rear end. And I just want to make that a public record. A little bit more about Farm Pond Road, as everybody said, it's a great place to live. It is unique with animals and everything else. We bought into Farm Pond Road because of that. I would say the average lot size is about five acres. That's unique to Cary area. But we bought into Farm Pond because of those values, just like people at Preston bought into the values, people at Lockmere and McGregor Downs. They are bought into that subdivision for the values of that subdivision. And again, just because the subdivision wants to come in with smaller lot sizes, we know that land will probably be developed. Our concern is develop it to where it's not going to impact us. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Sherrill. Next speaker, please.
My name's Jessica Smith. I'm fifteen, and I'm also a resident of Farm Pond Road. I'm a new driver. I just got my permit. I'm sure everyone's been there, done that. But driving with my mom is a whole other thing, and just being in the car simply is kind of nerve-wracking, and especially turning out of that road, which is an everyday thing for me because I live there. And it makes me really nervous. There's cars coming up, they can't see me. And makes me nervous. My mom makes me even more nervous when they're next to me. Everyone, I mean, they can't see you, like when you're turning into our road, turning left, they can't see you over that bump. I mean, they just fly up behind you, and like I said, as a beginning driver, that's not an okay feeling. I want to be able to drive comfortably, and I can't do that with people flying up behind I guess that's pretty much it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. Next speaker, please.
My name is Sid Smith. I'm at 5925 Farm Pond Road. I'd like to start off by thanking you guys' attention to this matter. I know that almost every one of you have been out to Farm Pond, if not every one of you, sometime or another have been there. It takes time. We've seen the cars coming up and down the road. You've come in the morning, you've come in the evening, you've come in the middle of the day, and we appreciate that attention. And I think you see why we're fighting to kind of keep it the way that it is. So we've tried to stay, you know, just at the matters of hand, which are, you know, the consistency of the land use, and the big thing is just the transition of taking four to ten acre lot sizes down to eight thousand square feet. That's not a transition. As well as, like Ray had mentioned, we've bought into a neighborhood that had a covenants that we all bought into that was going to stay a certain way. We were asked to live that way, and now, just because it needs to be sold, we're asked to look at it differently or ignore that fact, and I don't think that's fair. But again, thank you for your time. We appreciate the time, and we know it's a tough decision. It's been in front of the zoning committee, it's been in front of you guys. It's a tough decision to make, but we appreciate the diligence that you put into it. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
I'm Kim Smith, and I'm also a resident. You've heard from my daughter, you've heard from my husband, 5925 Farm Pond Road. You've heard that address a lot lately, and we do appreciate all the time that you've taken to kind of hear our side of this. And we know this has been tough because this is our second time seeing you, and we've also been in front of your planning and zoning. And we also brought all of our concerns to them, and at that time, they couldn't come up with a decision. I know we're all aware that they did come to tie, and it's because they heard our side, and we'd like you to hear our side again tonight. And it's, we are concerned about the transition, we are concerned about our expectations of a neighborhood, of what we bought into, and call it covenants, call it restrictions, call it what you want, but it was handed to us when we closed on our home, and that was the expectations that we are living by. And I know that you live by that, if you live in a neighborhood or anywhere for that matter. And I really would like to talk about the numbers. You know, the, L-Star wants to bring in forty-three homes. Forty-three homes is a lot, and then when you start putting families in those homes, that's a lot of little people, which brings my concern about schools and busing, and my daughter doesn't ride the bus right now, and she doesn't ride the bus because I'm afraid of her sitting on the bus when the bus stops on Davis Drive because it brings us back to traffic. And I am concerned that if, for some reason, this is going to be into Cary, then it bumps our house out of the Davis Drive School District, which I realize that can change at any time, but this house has been in the Davis Drive School District since it was built, which is twelve years ago. And we like Davis Drive Schools. Again, one of the things we bought into, and when we bought this house there, that was ponies. And if houses go there, that moves my child out of Davis Drive Schools. Now, she is in Green Hope, but I'd like her to be there for the next two years, and I'd like, as we all know, I don't want to change schools again as she's a senior, and that might push my, her ability to go to Green Hope. So please reconsider this, and the other thing is, now might not be the time to make the decision on this rezoning. We don't have to make a decision maybe tonight. Maybe we can revisit this at a later date. Might not be the time to make the decision. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. Anyone else to speak at Public Speaks Out? I see no one, so I'll close Public Speaks Out, and we'll move to our public hearings. Our first public hearing on the printed agenda was the Wright Property rezoning and comprehensive plan consistency statement, and the applicant has withdrawn this case, and we removed it from our agenda. Our second rezoning is the, or our second public, public hearing is on a rezoning for the Morris Branch rezoning, that's 12 RZ27, and Mrs. Beerman of our staff will introduce the item. We're going to hear from the applicant, and after we hear from the applicant, we're going to open the public hearing, and the council will not act on this request this evening. Instead, we're going to refer it to our Planning and Zoning Board. Mrs. Beerman.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This is a public hearing on a request to rezone approximately 9.3 acres, properties located at 10700 Green Level Church Road. Site is located on the east side of Green Level Church Road, about 2,000 feet north of McCrimmon Parkway. The existing zoning district is R40. The proposed zoning district is transitional residential conditional use, and there is one zoning condition that's been proposed that would limit the land use to townhomes. The land use plan designation for the site is medium-density residential, which allows three to eight units per acre. The maximum density that's allowed in the transitional residential district is six units per acre, so it is within that range envisioned by the land use plan. According to Cary GIS data, the property is potentially impacted by stream buffers. Field determination is required, however, at the time of site or subdivision plan approval to confirm whether or not those buffers are required. The Park's Recreation and Cultural Resources Facility master plan shows a proposed street-side trail along the frontage on Green Level Church Road. Green Level Church Road is a major thoroughfare on the Cary transportation plan. The property is not located along an existing or proposed future transit route. Notice of the public hearing was sent to property owners within 400 feet, as indicated on this map. The notice was also posted on the property and published in the Cary news. There were two protest petitions filed, one of which is valid, and the concerns expressed in those protest petitions focused on land use and density, pedestrian safety, noise, lack of recreational areas, and access. This concludes staff's presentation, and the applicant is here to speak to the request.
Very good. I would invite the applicant forward at this time. Not here?
Well, he was here earlier.
Oh.
Yes.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the Town Council. My name is David Lastly, 8522 Six Forks Road, Raleigh, North Carolina. Glenda Top is out this week. She normally was, is kind of spearheading this, this particular case. She asked that I come tonight and, and speak and present the case to you, so bear with me as I go through this case. Mary's done a good and excellent job of describing the property and the requests we're making. What I'd like to do is elaborate on some of the items. The property is located in the northwest area of the town's comprehensive plan. That particular area recommends medium density for the property. Medium density, as Mary pointed out, is from three to eight dwelling units per acre. The density allowed in the transitional residential district is six, so we fall well within that range. Therefore, request is in compliance with the town's northwest area plan. The 9.3-acre size of the tract is appropriate for the proposed use. The adjoining properties will be adequately buffered from the proposed development due to the buffer requirements, the LDO. And as you might have seen on one of the presentation slides, the riparium buffer, which is along the east boundary of the property, really creates a natural buffer that isolates it from some of the other single-family residential nearby. The request will comply with all elements of the town of Cary's comprehensive plan. The proposed townhome development will be required to meet applicable town of Cary design requirements, including stormwater, height, and lighting regulations. Development plans submitted will comply with the town of Cary's Land Development Ordinance, Community Appearance Manual, and Design Land Development Ordinance, or Guidelines Manual. The town of Cary will be able to provide sufficient public safety, transportation, and utility services and facilities to the property while still maintaining sufficient levels of service to existing development. Now, the original condition that this case was filed with was to limit the use on the property to townhomes. At our last neighborhood meeting, the neighbors were told that we would add two other conditions, and I'd like to propose those tonight. One was that all the units would have two-car garages, and that also, all of the units would be two-story units. This, in addition to the town's design requirements, will ensure a quality development. Good land use planning principles support this type of development in this type of location. Front's on a major thoroughfare, it's isolated from some of the other properties, kind of stands there alone. The existing residential property owners will be adequately protected by the provisions already in the Land Development Ordinance. Three neighborhood meetings were held for this particular case. Issues raised at the meetings, you saw the list that Mary had presented, they include access, road improvements, perimeter buffer, streetscapes, and quality of the development compatible with surrounding development, building height, and the price of the homes. The access, street layout, and connections will all be addressed at the time of site plan approval. Those are things that'll go through a review when there's an actual plan prepared. The site will line up with the main entrance to Wecroft, which is the residential street to the west, so there'll be an entrance point directly across from that, and it'll be required to meet the town's connectivity policy. As part of the development of the site, Green Level Church Road will be improved to its ultimate section. That ultimately is to be designed to a six-lane thoroughfare with a median, so that, that will be the ultimate build-out, and as part of this development, that'll be required to make improvements to Green Level Road. All perimeter buffers are required to be opaque as per the LDO. This means that buffers are undisturbed, and additional plant material is added only if the existing plant material doesn't meet the opaque standard. Town of Cary is set, has a set of design requirements that address the quality of development. These standards will ensure that the proposed development will fit into the existing development patterns of the area. The northwest area plan designates this property and the area east of Green Level Church Road in the vicinity of the proposed zoning as medium-density residential. Several property owners submitted protest petitions. We understand there's one valid protest petition filed against rezoning by Mr. James Chow. That is the property directly to the south of the parcel. Mr. Chow's primary concern is the quality of the units. He's concerned that they won't be up to the grade of the other development or single-family residential around there. All we can do is assure him that it will meet the strict and stringent requirements of the town's LDO requirements. One other protest petition was filed that was not valid, but it also had to deal with the Ridgefield Farms development itself. The northwest area plan has a notation for this, for Ridgewood Farm, or Ridgefield Farms that says that three of those lots have to come together before it can be developed as medium-density residential. I would like to point out, this particular parcel is not part of Ridgefield Farms, and I want to make that clarification. That was something that was addressed upon filing this zoning case, and it was something that the staff confirmed. Other than that, the developer of the property is committed to continuing to work with the property owners within Ridgefield Farms to address any of the remaining concerns that they may have, and I thank you for your time this evening. I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Has staff completed their report?
Yes.
Okay. At this time, I'll open up the public hearing for those who would like to speak on this rezoning, the Morris Branch rezoning, and I would invite the first speaker forward at this time. Could I get you to move to the left? Thank you.
I'm Robert Traywick. I'm one of the residents of Ridgefield Farm, and I filed one of the informational petitions. I'd like to expand upon Ms. Beerman's report and talk about two things. One is the northwest plan. If you look at that plan, you'll see that this rectangular region now surrounded by these roads and a creek form as sort of a natural area, and they are all circled and all noted by Note Six, which says that, which recommends when rezoning occurs from very low-density residential to medium-density, that three lots be considered. And as you see, this proposal contains only one, one lot. And the intent behind that, I would imagine, is to share amenities and open space and have a more coherent development you can get with a larger area. This development of dense townhouses in the midst of single, surrounded on all sides by detached, single-family housing, starts a trend in this area that makes it more difficult for the Ridgefield Farms residents to develop their, their property. It starts a trend that sets the, the direction and restricts the opportunities there. My next point is about the land use plan that you see on the map. You'll see that to the, to the right, to the east of Green Level Church Road, there's a green open space designation, it's a hundred feet wide. This proposal requests that be slashed to 50 feet. This proposal requests that be slashed to 50 feet. And I just wanted to add, as a resident here, that, and someone who works for an international company in the area, I get a great deal of pride when I can show people this area and they remark to me on the greenery and the forest that remain. And I would hate to see us deviate further from this land use plan and from the Northwest Area Plan. And if this comes to you for a vote, I would ask you to send it back and ask for higher quality in the design for the current and the future residents of this area.
Thank you. Next speaker for this rezoning. Anyone else for the Morris rezoning? Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing, and unless council members have questions or comments.
I'll make a comment. You know, we just spent the last weekend talking about maintaining equality in our community, and also about trying to preserve the intent of our land use plans, and making sure that our land use plans result in the best community possible. It's very disappointing to me, and the three of us were on the council at the time when the Northwest Area Plan came through, and a couple of you might have been on Planning and Zoning Board when this came through. When we put a note on the land use plan, we had the total ability to try to say, this is what our intent is. We put the note on there, and now we see someone coming in and trying to develop a parcel of land completely incongruent with the surrounding, and completely against what the note on the land use plan says. To me, it's inappropriate. Even before I knew that that note was on there, when I looked at this, I pulled this up, and the first glance I looked at, I thought, this seems so wrong to come in on this little parcel and put in a bunch of townhomes when obviously, a larger tract would be better to develop in a cohesive manner, something that would have enough space to be able to maintain the buffers that need to be maintained, as well as putting in a recreational site. I'm just really tired of seeing these neighborhoods come to us that have no common space for people to recreate. And you can get by by saying, well, we don't have that many units, or whatever, but this is setting a precedent now for how the rest of this little quadrant here, this area, will develop out should this get approved, so, you know, I really hope that as Planning and Zoning looks at this, that they weigh the issues on this request seriously.
Okay. Other comments or questions?
Well, maybe just for Ms. Beerman, Mr. Lastly said that this particular parcel is not included in Note 6. I mean, how did that happen? Is that true? And if so, it sure looks like it should be.
When you look at Note 6, as written, it states that Ridgefield Farms, I mean, it refers to Ridgefield Farms, which we assume to mean the subdivision. When you, if you look at the actual subdivision map for Ridgefield Farms, it doesn't include this corner, so that was, I believe the interpretation is with the staff was, when they first came in, that this was not part of Ridgefield Farms. So that was...
But where was the purple line drawn? I mean, the purple line was on the map, right?
So it's, you know, the map and the note, and so this is good feedback for looking at the intent of that.
Thank you.
Okay. Other questions or comments? Okay. Seeing none, this'll go to a future Planning and Zoning Board here. Thank you, Ms. Beerman. We now move to public hearing number three. It's on annexations 12A21, 12A22. Ms. Granton of our staff will introduce these items, then I'll open up the public hearing, and council may take action on these items tonight. Ms. Granton.
Thank you. For your consideration is a request for annexation of approximately 1.29 acres of property located at 3616 Green Level West Road, approximately 580 feet west of Green Level West Road and the Green Level Church Road intersection. The property is located in Cary's ETJ and is currently zoned Residential 40. The request is not associated with a development plan or a rezoning. This is a request because the property owner is seeking town services. The second annexation petition before you tonight, 12A22, is a request for annexation of property on approximately 15.68 acres. It's located at 6025 Collins Road and 1021 Waldo Rude Boulevard, approximately 1,100 feet west of Waldo Rude Boulevard and the Davis Drive intersection. The property is located in Cary's ETJ and is currently zoned Residential Multifamily Conditional Use. There is a associated development plan, which proposes 109 townhomes on this property. And as the mayor advised, council may take action following the public hearing on both of these cases.
Okay. Thank you. This time, I'll open up the public hearing for annexations 12A21 and 12A22, and I would invite the first speaker forward at this time. Anyone to speak on either of these two annexations? Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing and open it up to the council members for questions, comments, or motion.
I'll make a motion to approve annexations 12A21 and 12A22.
There's a motion.
A second.
And a second discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Ms. Granton. We now move to Agenda Item F, the Howell Tract Annexation and Resoning. This is Annexation 12A09 and Resoning 12REZ12, and Ms. Granton, once again, of our staff will introduce these items, and we will vote on them tonight. Ms. Granton.
Thank you. This is a request from L-Star Management on behalf of Mr. Gary Howell to rezone approximately 14.8 acres from Wake County zoning designation of R40 to a Town of Cary zoning designation of Transitional Residential Conditional Use. The subject property is currently located outside Cary's ETJ and outside its corporate limits, therefore, it's necessary for the property to be annexed prior to a zoning designation being placed on the property. The applicant has submitted the annexation petition voluntarily, but has asked that some direction be given from the council as to how they would be voting on the rezoning before the annexation is applied. So the action on the annexation won't take place until after you've had an opportunity to discuss the rezoning case. This is a vicinity map showing the subject property located at the northwest corner of Farm Pond Road and Davis Drive, and an aerial view that shows that the property is a combination of vacant land, a single-family detached residence, agricultural uses, and accessory structures. Cary's land use plan designation for the subject property is Low Density Residential. The designation on this plan dates from 1996. The existing zoning is Wake County Residential 40, and the applicant has proposed Transitional Residential Conditional Use. At the first public hearing, when this was initially presented to you, the applicant proposed a maximum density of three dwelling units per acre and limited the use to single-family detached residential. There was support voiced from the neighborhood to the north. However, the Farm Pond Road residents, many of whom you heard from tonight, expressed concerns about traffic, property values, compatibility with their existing neighborhood because of the lot size and density proposed, and there were questions about connectivity to Farm Pond Road. On the transportation plan, Farm Pond Road is proposed as a minor collector road, and this is the Long Range Comprehensive Transportation Plan. The town does not have any capital projects currently to make this connection, but it is on the long-range plan, as shown with the dash blue line. So this is something that is a concern to the residents on Farm Pond Road regardless of the zoning. At the Planning and Zoning Board public hearing, the applicant offered the following new conditions: that there be a minimum lot size of 7,250 square feet, and that lots immediately adjacent to the Stone Crest and Farm Pond Road subdivisions, north and west of the subject property, be a minimum of 8,000 square feet. The applicant's also offered a condition to limit the number of dwelling units to 43 single-family detached dwellings. At the Planning and Zoning Board meeting, there was much discussion and ultimately no recommendation. As you may have seen or read in the staff report, it was a tie vote, and they could not reach a recommendation. This concludes staff's presentation. If the Planning and Zoning Board Chair is here, I have not seen him tonight, he can fill you in a little bit further about the discussion, or we can answer any questions you have.
Thank you. Actually, Ms. Adcock, were you at the Planning and Zoning Board meeting for that discussion?
I was not, believe it or not.
Oh, you missed one.
I know.
That's a shocker.
Well, actually, I usually watch them from home in my kitchen, but I missed that one.
Okay. Questions, comments?
Can Ms. Granton speak to the Planning and Zoning Board's discussion? Was there a motion to deny that failed? Motion to approve that failed? How'd it go?
Well, the motion to approve failed because it was 50/50, so there was no point in taking action, because it was very clear, based on the discussion, that the board was divided equally. It was found to be consistent in terms of the density, but there was concern about the compatibility because of the lot sizes and the residential character, the large lots in the Farm Pond Road neighborhood. There was a lot of discussion about the concerns about a restrictive covenants. We spent a lot of time talking about that and got advice from our legal representation, and it was determined that there was no evidence of the zoning conditions applying to Mr. Howell's property, that it was apparent he may have conveyed deed restrictions when he sold the property, but didn't have those on his own property. And we explained that if there were conditions, restrictions, that's something that would be a private matter. Still didn't change the fact that the neighbors had an expectation of the larger lots. And so when you see the subdivision plan, there was an expectation that the neighborhood was complete, and yet, in Mr. Howell's mind, it was not. It was ready to be subdivided further.
I had some questions for Deborah Walsh. She's there, if this is an appropriate time to ask them.
Okay.
I didn't know what gender.
Okay.
Thanks so much, Deborah. Mr. Cheryl mentioned that in 1994, that the Planning and Zoning Board removed the connection of Howell Road and Farm Pond Road from the transportation plan. Is that correct? Because that's not what you showed us on the front.
This was new information that we were hearing tonight, and I'm not sure if he was talking about Wake County or not.
Because we could have done it anyway, because it's not in our...
Farm Pond Road is in Wake County and in Wake County's jurisdiction.
So maybe he meant the Wake County Planning Board.
Very possibly. We had not seen that document or heard about it until tonight. But they may have removed their plans to make the connection. As I mentioned, the town does not have any capital projects toward making this connection, but it's on our long-range plan.
Well, I don't know whether to make a motion first and speak. Let me just try this. If I can find the right one here. I'd like to move that we deny rezoning 12REZ12, and if I get a second, I'll speak to it.
Second.
There's a motion, a second.
Well, there's so many, I have two pages of notes about this. There's so many concerns. You know, when you look at the map, and you look at that site, Deborah, go back to the one you, well, that's fine. I like the bigger one, personally, yeah. It's so obvious that this site belongs with all those other homesteads on Farm Pond Road. And when you picture that if that parcel was developed in harmony with those homes, there would be no more than three homes on that site instead of 43. To me, that's jarring, and inappropriate, and non-harmonious. And so when you look at the staff report, go to page, humor me, and go to page three. Okay, on page three, just, you know, as I look at this, it's non-harmonious, minimum lot with current zoning 110 feet, and with the proposed zoning, almost half that, 60. When you go to, also on page three, and you look at the traffic report or the traffic overview, with current zoning, 39 combined peak trips in the morning and the afternoon, with proposed zoning 92. To me, that is, just get beyond even the anecdotal reports, which are, you know, remarkable enough, but just think about that doubling of traffic based from current zoning to proposed zoning. And then when I look at page six, which is, to me, is the core matter before us, and you talk about criteria for consideration, review, and rezoning, and I read number three, pardon me, when I read numbers four, five, and six, which speak to not rezoning unlikely to have significant adverse impacts on the natural environment. Number five, shall not have significant adverse impacts on the property in the vicinity of the subject tract. And number six, the proposed zoning classification is suitable for the subject property? I find that this proposal does not meet any of those, and for that reason, I think we should reject it.
May I ask a question of you? How do you see this building out? You see it stay in as is? Or...
Well, I don't know that it should be one house per five acres, but I don't think it should be 43 homes per 14.5.
You don't know how it builds out, but you know this isn't it?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
That's a great question. Thanks for asking.
My concern is the lack of transition between the single-family homes on Farm Pond Road. I would be willing to actually possibly give up more density towards the Davis Drive side if you had a lot more compatible units or styles of homes up against the Farm Pond resident side, so, just to...
Too dense, is what you're saying? There's no actual transition?
I think the folks that moved into and bought into the Farm Pond, that community there, had an expectation. And times change, and things change, and that's what we're here for. And I'm not opposed to this possibly, you know, ultimately developing under a medium-density type zoning designation, but I would want to see low-density maybe towards the Farm Pond resident side, and then the higher density up the Davis Drive side.
And my only concern with that is then you talk about, what does this neighborhood look like from the street? We don't want to just make our, you know, community not look that good. And then you think about the future owners who are going to have their homes. If you put more density towards the street, then these people are going to have much smaller yards right up against future Davis Drive. Is that really good quality of living? Is that what we want to go for? So, you know, it sounds like it's, you know, too much on...
I mean, I'm looking at something similar across the street, but...
It's a little bit different, because it has a railroad right along there that acts as a buffer, and a train runs twice a day.
It can be done. It's not our job to design the project.
No, no, but...
It's basically us to, you know...
And I had one other question, Deborah, if I could, and I should have asked this first. If this property was currently annexed, would the protest petition filed by the neighbor be valid?
There is...
If it was currently annexed?
If it was currently annexed in a R40 designation, well, we did not receive a protest petition, but there would be the opportunity.
I thought there was a thing in the staff report, if I misread it.
No, when it's property that's not in our ETJ or in our corporate limits, then general statutes does not make it eligible for a protest petition.
Okay, so I'm reading on page two, in your table, under Town Limits. The subject property, let's see, "A citizen-initiated annex petition was submitted by the property owners in conjunction with this rezoning request." And then, of course, it talks about how it's not valid because it's not annexed.
Right.
So my question is, if it were in our town limits, would what that neighbor filed be valid? What am I missing, Deborah? Because it says...
It's a hypothetical. It can't be, it does not have Cary zoning on it today.
I know that.
It would have to be annexed and then have Cary zoning put on it simultaneously. And in the old days, we used to bring it in with a holding zoning of Residential 40, the closest comparable, but when we knew what it was the applicant was seeking, we'd ask them to go ahead and submit the rezoning application at the same time, so we knew what we were getting simultaneously. If they had annexed the land many years ago, or even last year, and just brought it in as R40, and then come back a year later and ask for TR, then yes, the opportunity would be there for an annexation, or for a protest petition.
I feel like I still didn't get my question answered, but it doesn't matter, because I'm not in favor of it anyway. But my point was going to be, there would be a higher threshold for passing this if it was already annexed. That was the point I was trying to make.
Yeah, if I could just add too, it doesn't depend on just being in the limits, but you have to receive an appropriate number of protests.
Right, it has to meet a certain threshold. That was just my question. I appreciate that.
The applicant has advised me that he is interested in exploring and addressing some of these concerns that he's heard tonight, and if you would like to hear from him, he's asked that this be tabled to give him time to address some of these concerns.
Before we go there, there's a couple of questions I have. We have a motion... We have a motion to rezon, but we can't rezon this before we address the annexation. Is that correct?
There's...
Annexation's last.
Right.
That's correct.
I'm correct or I'm not?
The motion was made to deny the rezoning. However, what would...
We need to do the annexation first, but we needed to get a feel...
Right.
For the rezoning before we address the annexation.
I think you can go forward with rezoning, but the annexation should follow. You can't do a site plan or subdivision plan.
Okay, very good. I just want to make sure we are in order then. Then back to the discussion.
Go ahead, Mr. Z.
Ms. Smith.
What I'm trying to understand is, with the focus being on the property to the west, the request of rezoning would be consistent with Sherwood Forest, that Sherwood Forest area. Am I correct?
Stonecrest.
So, you know, what I was thinking about is, you know, what you were saying, Ms. Jennifer, about the appearance on the road and that. I mean, if it has an appearance that's consistent with all of the other development, what am I missing?
Okay. And what I was responding to Don's comment, that he'd rather have lower density to the west and push that, those lots smaller on the east. I'm saying, if you got any smaller, then, you know, you're really squishing those yards. The... I think the point that the residents were also making here is that in Stonecrest, the lots are actually larger than the minimum. And I did talk to the applicant about that, and the applicant said the reason why his smallest lot was because he had, you know, he had to squish those lots right next to Davis Drive because of the amount of right-of-way required, and that was his justification for it. But I'm not opposed to having it go back, to be tabled, but if it was tabled, I would want it to go back to P&amp;Z again, and I would expect...
That's different than tabling it. That's rescinding it to P&amp;Z.
Yeah, but I don't know...
Yeah, we're not tabling it, because we can't vote on it.
Well, to table it, we'd have to vote down the motion to deny, and then we could...
Or you could withdraw.
Or withdraw.
That's what I'd prefer, if that's what we're going to do. Because, I mean, you know, I'm willing to give these folks a chance to bring us something better than this, but that's P&amp;Z's job to deliberate on it. And as we know, and all of you who served on P&amp;Z, so if that's the will of council then, and the intent, then I'll withdraw my motion. But I expect to see it look better than this when it comes back.
When you say you expect it to look better, would you hope to see that the minimum lot size is 20,000 square feet, since that's what the neighbors who bought along here were anticipating, based on their covenants? I understand the covenant wasn't on this property, but...
Right, and we never...
Sometimes it's, you know, so hard as a person who's buying a piece of property, you're making an investment, you make an assumption based on the fact that your covenant says one thing, and it's right next to a piece of land that you think is in the neighborhood, so you presume that covenant, that that lot adheres to the same covenant. You know, thankfully, this... We're not supposed to even really have to look at the covenant, but we are supposed to apply our discretion, and we have a lot of discretion at this table for rezonings.
And 20,000 square feet will be more than twice what they're offering as the largest lot in this plan. So I don't know what their plan is, and I know that's not, you know, maybe what they're prepared to speak to tonight. I don't think any harm is done by sending it back to P&amp;Z, because if it comes back and we still feel that it's not harmonious with the land, we can still deny the rezoning. So I don't think we lose anything. I think, you know, there's only opportunity to be gained.
Let me get a nod of heads one way or the other. We're interested in sending it back to P&amp;Z. Ed says yes. Laurie says yes. Don, what do you think?
I would like to have a better understanding of what P&amp;Z might be looking at.
They'd look at a new proposal.
Yeah.
Is it inappropriate to ask the applicant to give us an idea of what they think they've heard us say tonight?
It's up to council discretion to bring the applicant up to clarify or...
I'd like to ask him to come back.
Please.
And I'd like to ask what he thinks he's heard us say tonight, and how that would influence what he would send to P&amp;Z.
Our interest in tabling it would be, as I understand the ordinance, if you deny it, if you make a vote on it, there's a requirement of a one-year waiting period until we can bring this back before you.
That we can waive.
Obviously, we'll have to go back to the drawing board, start... When we look at a piece of property like this, we don't just look at zoning. We do numerous site plans. We look at all the impacts, the issue of the railroad track on the other side of Davis Drive, meaning that the entire Davis Drive right-of-way dedication would have to come onto this property in order to meet the comprehensive transportation plan. We look at stream buffers. We look at ponds. We look at perimeter buffers. We look at road connectivity. So we've probably done six, eight different site plans throughout the process, and as we get feedback from the surrounding residents, trying to create a plan and working with staff, understanding what they might approve. So while what's before you tonight is only a rezoning, please be aware, we have done a number of site plans. We have a good idea of what we want this to look like. Now, we'll have to, again, go back to the drawing board. If the desire is to create something larger up against the Farm Pond edge, make, say that's 10,000 square feet, say that's 15, 20, whatever that number is, we have to go back, draw it out, do some site plans, look at the financial impact of what that would look like.
And then see what that...
Of course, talk with the property owner and the seller and see, you know, what agreements we might be able to make. So I can't stand here at the podium tonight and tell you exactly what that new plan will look like, but I'm absolutely willing to go back and do that. My interest, again, in tabling it is just, don't make us wait a year to come back on this. Let us go back through the process. Let us amend, create some new conditions, go back to Planning and Zoning Board, present what we have, you know, meet with you individually, if that will help, and, you know, present what we have. Get your ideas. Get everybody's feedback. That's really the way we operate at L-Star. We don't try to force anything that shouldn't be appropriate.
Thank you. Gail, it's, I mean, Ms. Adcock, it's looking like...
Yeah, I appreciate that. I wanted to make two points. One is that, as Mr. France pointed out, council has the discretion to waive the one-year waiting period, even if this rezoning were to fail. And I do think that I would ask the applicant to consider that as they do all the many things they look at to decide what the right density is, to provide them with, you know, everything they need for this, to consider that 20,000-foot lots sounds more appropriate to me. Maybe I'm in the minority on that, but I'll put that little stake in the ground.
Ms. Smith?
Yeah. Well, I think, you know, we've had our retreat. You've made some comments earlier about the fact that the zonings are getting more and more difficult. They're... Some of them are infill, some of them are not. And we keep hearing a high degree of frustration of not kind of meeting the vision and the plan that we have as a council. And, you know, what seems to happen, and this is anecdotal in my personal opinion, is that we're always asked to push the envelope. You know, we challenge, is it note number eight, note number six, you know, and on and on. My bias, my preference would actually be, we've got to draw the line, and I say, we keep the motion and we vote on the denial. And if something comes back that's really good, and there's been genuine effort to work with compatible, the compatibility issues with the surrounding area, we have the discretion to waive the one-year period. So, you know, you can do it both ways. You can skin the cap both ways. You can table and trust that that process will work, and then make that decision to vote, or you can put a little bit of heat on the table, fire under the butt, and... How else to say it? And say, no, no, this is not what we want. This is not what we were planning. This is not what we're doing. We hear you. You're being genuine in your comments that you want to revisit the site plan. My concern about that comment is, well, you visited eight or nine site plans, and you came up with this one to come forward, and, you know, you're kind of hearing it's, there's less taste and less filling. I mean, it's just not there, you know? Right? I mean...
You're really on point tonight, Ms. Smith.
Whatever the heck it is. It was last year's Super Bowl, I guess. I don't know. But the point is, I don't want to make light of it. It was a serious investment, and I understand that. But I think there has, there comes a time when we're trying to do our comprehensive plans and that, that the message has got to go to the community, that, you know, you come forward, come forward not always trying to find a way to work around the intent, but to say, this is unique. Like, in the past, we had a lot that would come in, they're unique, they didn't quite meet the plan, but there was a compelling nature. I don't find the compelling nature anymore. That's what I'm struggling with.
Let's make the motion, let me just say, why don't I let the motion stay, and we'll see what council thinks. And if the motion fails, then I'll make a motion to send it back to P&amp;Z.
All right. Any further discussion?
Sorry if I preempted this question.
I wish I could take what Ms. Robinson said for the Morris Branch track, because I think this is just a mirror image of that.
Exactly what she said.
That's what I mean.
And I think all of those comments you made about harmonious and transition and what's expected and what's the continuity, I wish that applicant was here, because I'd hate for that effort to go all the way through P&amp;Z and for us to have a déjà vu moment with Morris, or with Morris Branch that we're having here, and I hope that that applicant sees it. And I really support the idea that almost all of the rezonings, except for a few areas, pristine Greenville areas that are left in West Cary, they'll all be like this. We'll be having this conversation about harmonious networks, continuity, and I think that this is a message that a lot of applicants should take in, and maybe the less filling...
Less taste, more filling.
That's right.
From the '70s, Super Bowl.
Should internalize and...
Oh, yeah, that's the way it is.
I don't know.
Okay. So, Ms. Yerha?
Yeah. Well, I'm certainly prepared to vote on it tonight. I mean, the lot size is what's just sticking me. I mean, Mr. Davis had those numbers, 87... I guess it's R8, Stonecrest, but the average lot size is 8,700 in most of the streets. And the ones, just looking at this, I didn't do the analysis, but it looks like the ones closer to this site are even bigger, you know, than that. So I am prepared to vote on this like the rest of you are tonight. The only reason tabling it, you know, sending it back to P&amp;Z, might, you know, be the thing to do is that we have to remember it was a four-to-four vote, and maybe this will give them another opportunity to, with some new, you know, conditions, to actually weigh in on it. That's... I'm prepared to vote either way. I mean, I just wanted to bring that up.
And I'd like to make one other comment, is that we're setting a precedent by doing this. This is the first domino in a series. And by doing this, we set in motion what's going to happen with the rest of this land. And I think we have to take that very seriously, and I can't call the questions since I made the motion, but I invite anyone else to do so.
I'll be glad to.
Can you restate, is the motion...
The motion is to deny.
Deny the rezoning request. If, without any further comments, I would call the question. All in favor of this motion, please say aye.
Aye.
As opposed? Motion carries unanimously. We have to deal with the annexation as well? Or do... Yes.
I move to take no action on the annexation.
Second.
Well, the applicant would have the opportunity to withdraw the annexation petition or table the annexation petition.
Withdraw?
Yeah.
Okay. Withdrawn?
The applicant has withdrawn the annexation petition.
And then we have the comprehensive plan consistency?
Is that also...
There's two options, and I think it should be option B, since it was denied.
Okay. I would entertain a motion. Option B.
Option B.
Okay. There's a motion, option B.
Right. Second.
And a second discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. And I'll just offer it to council. We talked about a waiver. If anybody wants to bring that forward before we move on.
Do you have to do that now?
No, you don't.
No.
Absolutely do not.
I think we should see what comes.
Okay.
See what they want to do.
Very good. All right. Thank you, Ms. Grantan. We'll now move to all the new business. Item H1 is our federal legislative agenda. Ms. Hi will present this item, and council may act on it tonight. Ms. Hi.
Good evening, council. As we do each year, town staff met with our federal legislative consultants last week to identify town needs and priorities that may be eligible for federal funding. Your staff report includes a list of projects and activities and the potential funding sources and legislative opportunities. And I do say potential funding sources, because in many cases, as you're probably aware, there's actually not a federal budget for FY13 yet. And as a result, many of the agencies, since they're working under a continuing resolution, haven't even released their grant guidelines yet. There's also a list of other priorities that includes legislative items and positions on a number of issues that we expect may come up in this congressional session. Staff recommends adoption of the federal legislative agenda, and I'm available to answer any questions that you might have.
Very good. Questions or comments from Ms. Hi?
I'll make a motion and then comment. Could I move to approve the proposed federal legislative agenda as detailed in the staff report?
There's a motion.
Second.
And a second.
I just wanted to say, my goodness, what a large amount of work. I love the way you did this with what we're looking for and where we might get the money. You made it very easy to follow, and it was pretty complex, so I really appreciate that.
And we'll be heading up there in less than three weeks to present this to the agencies, and that's entertaining. I wish we could videotape it, so you guys could see those conversations. Those are interesting.
You can just let us go instead.
I might let you. Some of those guys are pretty cold. Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Further discussion? All in favor of this motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Ms. Hi.
Thank you.
We now, we've removed the transportation development fee increase from our agenda, and we'll see this on the February 13 council meeting, and we're ready for a closed session. I'll entertain a motion.
Pursuant to GS 143-31811A, I move that we hold a closed session to discuss matters relating to the location or expansion of industries or other businesses in the town, including agreements on a tentative list of economic development incentives that may be offered by the town in negotiation, to consult with attorneys employed by and retained by the town in order to preserve the attorney-client privilege between the attorneys and the town, and to prevent the disclosure of information that's made privileged or confidential by GS 143-31810E.
There's a motion.
A second.
And a second. Discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously, and we'll now go into closed session. Motion carries unanimously, and we'll now go into closed session. Motion carries unanimously and we'll now go into closed session.
We'll reconvene the council meeting and then I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved?
Second.
There's a motion, second. Discussion, all in favor? Please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously and we are adjourned. Thank you.
This has been a production of KIRI TV. Visit the Town of KIRI website at townofkirii.org.